We will call to order the city council meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt? Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Rob Clark?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here. Would you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now, you know, last week I had the opportunity to get sworn in as our mayor. And this council meeting, we want to recognize our former mayor Glenn Lewis, who served for 30 years as the mayor of City Moore, a city that he loved. And so we wanted to recognize that. And his brother and his daughter are here to receive this on his behalf. And I'll read this. It says, "Whereas Glenn Lewis has devoted an exemplary 30 years of dedicated service as the mayor of the City of Moore, and whereas Mayor Lewis, through his steadfast leadership, has proven to be the embodiment of compassion and resilience, especially in the wake of several devastating tornadoes that struck our beloved city; and whereas Mayor Lewis's unwavering commitment to the welfare of our citizens during times of crisis has forever defined him as one of the most caring mayors in the state of Oklahoma; and whereas Mayor Lewis's tireless efforts and strategic vision have brought about significant economic development, leaving an indelible mark on the growth and prosperity of the City of Moore; and whereas Mayor Lewis's foresight and dedication to economic stability will continue to sustain us for generations to come; and whereas Mayor Lewis has been a tireless advocate for progress, unity, and community enrichment, fostering an environment that reflects the spirit of the City of Moore. Now therefore, I, Mark Ham, mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim May 2nd, 2024, as Mayor Glenn Lewis Day, in recognition of his three decades of exemplary leadership and service. Furthermore, as a token of our city's enduring appreciation for Mayor Glenn Lewis's exceptional contributions, I am honored to present him with the key to the City of Moore, symbolizing the trust and gratitude of the citizens he has so faithfully served. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Moore to be affixed to this on the 15th day of April, 2024." And honestly, we could put Pam Lewis's name on this because they were a team and they served our city well. So at this time, I'd love to come down there and present this key to the city, as well as the proclamation that we have framed to Tim and to Laura.
You know, I'll never forget, a little over 30 years ago, now there's nobody that knows my brother better than I. He and I shared a bedroom growing up in a little house here in Moore, and then we shared a business that we worked together for six days a week for four and a half decades. And so nobody was more surprised 30 years ago when he decides to get up and head out the door. And I said, "Where you going?" He said, "Courthouse." "Why?" "The filing period's over in about half an hour." And I said, "Filing period? What are you talking about?" "For mayor." And I said, "Now, you've got to remember where Moore was 30 years ago. It wasn't exactly where it is today." And I said, "Well, on God's green earth, would you want to be mayor of Moore?" And he said, "I'm tired of hanging my head in shame when people ask me where I live. I am uniquely qualified to do something about it." Glenn's education was in municipal management, and he had unimpeachable integrity. 30 years of that, Moore is a showpiece, and I'm really, really proud of him. And on behalf of my brother and my late sister-in-law, my niece Laura, thank you. I wish you guys continued success at kicking Norman's butt.
Counsel, if any of you would like to share a word, this would be a great time.
I think everything's been said.
Okay.
Just be sure and tell him thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, 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 Tim, sorry. We have one more. This is Glenn Brooks. Did you want to say what this is? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Yes, on behalf of the city staff, we would also like to present this to Mayor Lewis in appreciation for your faithful service to the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for 30 years. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Paul.
Yes, sir. And now we have another wonderful proclamation to read. And this is on behalf of our emergency 911 dispatchers. And so let me read this, as we want to recognize them for the job they do. It says, "Whereas in 1991, a congressional resolution named the second full week of April of every year National Telecommunicator Week; and whereas emergencies can occur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services; and whereas 911 is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations; and the 911 call taker's voice is the first assurance that help is on the way; and whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency; and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property; and whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens who telephone the 911 Communication Center; whereas public safety dispatchers are the heart of public safety, providing assistance before other emergency services arrive on the scene; and whereas public safety dispatchers are a vital link for emergency responders by monitoring their activities on the radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety; and whereas public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis; and whereas emergency dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties. Now therefore, it be it resolved that the City of Moore declares the week of April 14th through 20th, 24 to be National Telecommunicator Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our region's citizens and emergency responders safe, adopted this 15th day of April, 2024." Thank you. All right, that will move us to item number two, is our consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and that motion just needs to include the items A through C.
I, motion to approve consent docket, items A through C.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item three is consider approval of ordinance number 104924, amending Part 12, Chapter 5, Article B of the Moore Land Development Code by adding Section 12-512, establishing expiration dates for Platts, construction plan check prints, and construction plans approved or submitted prior to April 15, 2024, and establishing the extension and appeals process for the same. This is community development.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Items number three, four, and five are all companion items on your agenda. As we have been going through our plans, after our adoption of our new construction standards and details, and also the 2021 drainage criteria, we did notice that there are a total of 20 preliminary Platts that are still either under development or have never been developed or started development, and 10 final Platts that have been approved by city council but have never been completed development and are not currently under construction. These are listed in Attachment A of your packet. The final, in review of our city code, we do have an expiration date of two years for final Platts, but the expiration for preliminary Platts is more of an implied five-year timeframe instead of actually listed out specifically in city code. And I should note that because we haven't updated the construction standards and details in a long time, we haven't really enforced these expirations. So the current code does not currently set an expiration date for construction plans or construction plan check prints, which is also very important as we start the new review process with our updated standards and specifications. So in knowing that we do have these new codes to enforce, we did look around to see how the other surrounding Oklahoma City metro communities deal with this subject. And they do all have preliminary plat and final plat expiration dates. And Midwest City does have a construction plan expiration date, and that's in Attachment B of your packet. So in looking at what other communities do, and the number of Platts that we have that I would consider to be outstanding, I am proposing a tiered grace period for preliminary Platts, final Platts, and construction plans, and the construction plan check prints, with the ability to grant extensions. The, excuse me, sorry. The, what I'm proposing for the tiered expiration is that any dates, any Platts that were approved after the effective date of this ordinance, which would be May 15th if you approve it tonight, would have the five-year preliminary plat expiration date, two-year final plat expiration date. Construction plans are a six-month expiration date from approval of the work order, and the construction plan review print is six-month expiration date from the return of the last comment. Between January 1, 2020, and May 15th, for preliminary and final Platts, we would have an expiration date of three years, and construction plan expiration date of one year. And we would keep the six-month construction plan review check print expiration date. And anything approved between January 1, 2015, and December 31, 2019, and this would include the additions of Homestead at Cedar Farms, Mahogany Hills, and Broadmore Heights, they would all have their preliminary plat an automatic extension of two years, with a final plat extension of one year for any undeveloped final Platts. And then for anything approved prior to January 1 of 2015, we would recommend that those just expire. If they would like to extend that by a year, I will be in contact with them to see if they would like a one-year extension. But at this time, most of these additions really aren't seeing any sort of forward movement, with the only exception of Cinderella Lakes. They have one more section until that entire development is approved. So that's what these three ordinances do. If you have any questions, I'm happy to go into it into more detail.
Just one real anal question. So the extension process, when does it have to happen by?
So.
Before it expires?
Yes, 30 days before the expiration date. And they would contact me, and we would try to work out an expiration. You can, the ordinances does allow the city staff to put conditions on those expirations. So, or extensions, I'm sorry, so we can get our ordinances back into effect. If we're not able to come up with an agreement, they are able to appeal that decision to city council.
So is, based on what you said a while ago, will, as each of these plans expire, they'll be contacted?
I will act, if this is approved tonight, since I work with all of these engineers and developers on a routine basis, I will reach out to them and let them know, you know, see what their plans are, and work with them to get them, you know, teed up to continue their developments if they want to.
Elizabeth, would they?
Sorry. Have we already contacted ones with 2015?
I have not. The one that I have spoken with was Ideal Home, and they have one that was approved in, that's the Cardinal Landing that was approved in 2021.
Elizabeth, if they expire and there's still construction going on, would we not, would the expiration?
Yes, if there's already active construction, it would not expire.
And then if one did expire, and then they wanted to pick back up and start construction again, would it have to come back before council for approval, or?
No, if one expires and they let me know that they want to extend it, I could just handle that internally, administratively, to get them extended for a year. Now, if we can't come to terms on which ordinances apply, you know, then they could always appeal to city council.
That was my next, so the Platts that were approved before the new drainage ordinance and things, would they then be required to comply with the updated ordinance?
Yes, so the way we're handling that, and I'll give you the example of Cinderella Lakes, because I just, it had a section that was approved, just approved, and they're working on it. What we do is we make sure that all of the parts of the drainage criteria are applied that can be applied. So for example, Cinderella Lakes, when they started their development, they did a rough grading of the entire site, and so they didn't want to come back and regrade, and move dirt around, and add dirt in. So what we were able to do is work with them to make sure that they meant, met the intent of the plans. So their drainage calculations, they did use the new updated version, but it might be that maybe some of the slopes weren't quite as severe, I guess, just because they couldn't bring in all of the dirt needed to make those adjustments.
Thank you.
So we do try to work with developers wherever we can.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Item passes. Item four is consider approval of ordinance number 10524, amending Part 12, Chapter 5, Article C of the Moore Land Development Code by amending submittal requirements for preliminary Platts, establishing a required pre-application conference prior to preliminary plat submittal, amending the time limit for consideration of preliminary Platts to 60 days from the date of submittal, establishing a five-year expiration date for approved preliminary Platts, and establishing an extension and appeals process for the same.
Motion to approve. Second.
Will you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Motion, or item carries. Item five is consider approval of ordinance number 105124, amending Part 12, Chapter 5, Article D of the Moore Land Development Code by amending submittal requirements for final Platts, amending the time for consideration for final Platts from 45 days from date of submittal, establishing a two-year expiration date for approved final Platts, establishing an extension and appeals process for same, establishing review and approval process for subdivision improvement construction plans, establishing a six-month expiration date for subdivision improvement construction plan review prints, and an extension process the same.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have had a motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Thank you. Item six is consider appointing Kelly Maddox, Brandon Leb, Kathy Griffin to the Southwest Seventeenth Street Janeway Redevelopment Design Review Committee.
Motion to approve. Second.
Would you call, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item seven is consider approval of an agreement with Genuine Parts Company doing business as Napa Auto Parts for Repair Parts On-Site Management Program in response to RFP number
Mayor and council, back in early February, we sent out requests for proposals for general management of auto parts for the City of Moore with regards to its fleet, management of its fleet maintenance program. We did directly send out proposals to, request for proposals to four companies that we knew provided this service in the area. Three of them came to the, or to the Public Works Facility, the Fleet Maintenance Building, where the parts building is part of the new facility. And unfortunately, we only received one proposal, one proposer submitted, and that was Genuine Parts Company, which is DBA, Napa Auto Parts. We, we met with them, went over their contract. Their contract essentially assists of, consists of, you know, basically, they're going to, they would be the primary supplier of auto replacement parts, and other supplies and other equipment for the City of Moore. And then our portion of this end of the contract would be that we're required to provide a space for the inventory for the on-premises store for this particular parts management. The term of this contract would be, or this agreement is a one-year term, or is for a one-year period beginning on the effective date. They've indicated that they could start within the next month or so. We were thinking maybe around July 1st as a good start time. We'll just have to tie that down as to when we would start. Kind of two schools of thought. It'd be nice to get a little bit of experience before we get into the new year. But anyway, it'll be somewhere around July 1st that we would start the program. You know, Napa will operate the onsite store. They will provide an employee that will be the parts manager. And basically, our mechanics will come to the window and treat it just like a store, and we'll provide a work order, and they'll go ahead and be required to assign it, to sign it. And what it'll do for us is, is provide a very improved process of record-keeping for ourselves, as well as improve the efficiency time with our mechanics, because this parts manager for Napa is the one that will have to track down the parts. The majority of the parts, of course, will be Napa. But there, if we have special parts for fire trucks, or fire equipment, hose, pumps, and so forth, then we, you know, they'll go ahead and purchase those parts, and then, you know, charge us their 10% profit that is part of the agreement. So our mechanics, instead of spending several hours maybe trying to go get a part or track down a part, will be able to spend more time in the mechanic shop, working on the equipment. So that hopefully will improve some of the efficiency in that area. Plus, their reporting program, they will have, they will provide a general management program report that, you know, provides all kinds of information as it pertains to the parts that we've received, the time that the piece of equipment came in the shop, and then a piece of equipment had the new part put on and went back out, and how, you know, how long it's taking us to get a piece of a vehicle through our shop and out so it can perform its duties as required. Basically, from a budgeting standpoint for this next fiscal year, you know, our current budget this year was somewhere between $600,000 and $650,000 for parts. And so our budget for next year is going to be, or we're recommending a budget of approximately $600,000 for this. We anticipate somewhere around $50,000 a year purchase of parts. The other thing that we have to pay for in addition to the parts, we have to pay for all of the costs for the management of the shop. They have their own computer system that they utilize, and we'll be respons, or, you know, we'll be responsible for paying partially for the computers that they, or the computer that they provide, and the employee, his or her salary, and any operational costs that go forward with that. It's anticipated that the operational cost will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $7,500 a month, which works pretty well for us. I think the biggest thing that we'll see is improve, improvement as it relates to the efficiency of the mechanics, getting more vehicles worked on because they're not doing, handling the, tracking down of the parts and going to receive the parts.
Do they do any historical data collecting to know what to put in it to start with?
They, they have come through, they've looked at it, and they will do an inventory before they come in and take over. We have provided them an inventory of our vehicles. We have about 350 vehicles. We provided them a complete inventory of, not the parts, but, you know, what the vehicles and the equipment are that they'll be bought, you know, putting parts on. So, you know, it seems to be something that we hope will improve efficiency and accountability for ourselves, and would recommend approval.
Wonderful. Questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item eight is consider appointing Councilwoman Griffith as a member to serve on ACOG Board of Directors Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, Garber Wellington Policy Committee, and the 911 Association Board of Directors, with the remaining city council members to serve as alternates.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes.
Would you call the vote, please?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item nine is consider awarding bid number 2024-10 for construction of a new rescue apparatus and installation on currently owned chassis to Banner Fire Equipment, Inc., in the amount of $144,000. Equipment, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars and fifty-four cents.
Yes, Mayor and council, we sent our specs out for bid. We emailed a lot of companies. We got two responses back. The other bid came in at about ninety thousand dollars higher than this one. This is the same company that we purchased our fire trucks from. They're very reputable, they're great to work with, so we definitely recommend approval awarded to Banner Fire Equipment.
So is this budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. And passes. Item ten is consider approval of a contract for fiscal year twenty twenty-five with the Community Intervention Center, also known as PIVET, in the annual amount of twenty thousand dollars to receive and hold juveniles who have been taken into custody by law enforcement agencies.
Mayor and council, this is an annual renewal contract with our juvenile intervention group, PIVET, that we take juveniles to on a routine basis. This is a budgeted amount. It is up two thousand dollars over last year, but it was anticipated and expected and budgeted for, recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item eleven is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve A and B.
Second that.
Okay. We had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. We will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item twelve is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve items twelve, A, B, and C.
Second.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. This time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting.
So I don't, Melissa normally does this. Go ahead and call the roll, I'll do it.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt. Mark Ham.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Rob Clark.
Here.
Kathy Griffith.
Here.
Item fourteen is the consent docket.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket, item A.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
This time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
Okay. Item fifteen is new business. Item A is Citizens Forum, Items on the Agenda. Nobody has signed up. Anybody here wish to speak? Item B is items from the city council trustees. We had the ribbon cutting for the animal shelter. My, when was that? Last week? Yeah, last Thursday, and that was well-attended, and what a great facility it is. And I understand they got all of the animals moved over there, and everything seems to be going well. So thanks again to the citizens of Moore for approving that GO bond and allowing us to build this facility that will serve our city well for a number of years. And that's all that I have. Brooks?
We received notice from Allen Construction Company that due to the recent weather delays, they are now scheduled to come back and finish Eastern Avenue on April the twenty-ninth.
Awesome. Writing that down. Twenty-nine.
It's gonna rain, yeah.
All right. Well, I'm glad we're getting some updates. So that means AT&T is done?
Yes.
That's wonderful news. That's wonderful.
Yep.
Okay. Item sixteen is executive session. Section three oh seven, title twenty-five Oklahoma Statute permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. Item A is discuss and consider taking action concerning the city manager's evaluation and employment benefits as authorized by twen-, uh, title twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, three oh seven B one.
Make a motion. We convene to executive session.
Second.
Okay. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Okay. We'll be in executive session. Okay.
I'll be here if I'm needed.
All right.
Okay, we will reconvene from executive session. Just let the record show that everybody that was present is still present. And I don't think we need to take any action. Do we need a motion for no action, or are we just no action? Okay. There's no action, nothing to do. So the next item would be adjournment.
I'm moved.
Second.
You call the roll, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, we're adjourned.